All right, so we're gonna go ahead and call to order our Planning Commission meeting for September 2nd, 2021 at 6:31. And we'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, so just keep in mind that this session is being recorded, so we've got mics throughout the room. Go ahead and hand it over to Angela for a roll call of Commissioners.
Just before we start, Jamie, Commissioner Melter and Commissioner Lowman have called in both excused absences. So the rest of you, Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Commissioner Corn? He was there. Commissioner Journey?
Present.
Commissioner Walthius? Commissioner Parker?
Here.
And we lost Greg somehow?
He'll probably end up calling back in. We'll watch for him. All right, so at this point in our agenda, this is the time for public comment that is to address anything that is not on the agenda for tonight. So any additional business? I don't see anybody, so I will go with a no. What's that? Oh, okay. So you may have anything on the meeting minutes from our last meeting, August 19th? Any corrections or addendums?
Can you make sure his mic's on?
Yeah. Oh, you're on him.
I would move that we approve the minutes as they are written.
I second it.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. We'll go to Angela for a roll call vote.
Mr. Journey?
Yes.
Commissioner Corn? Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Walthius?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes. All right, we will move on to new business. Public hearing application ZMA 21-03. We'll open the public hearing at 6:35. The applicant is proposing to change the zoning map in an area consisting of approximately 62,291 square feet, 1.43 acres located in Sweet Home. The Sweet Home zoning map has proposed to change from the low-density residential R1 zone to the medium-density residential zone. The proposed zone change would bring the zoning designation into conformity with the property's existing comprehensive plan map designation. The Planning Commission will hold a public hearing to make a recommendation to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing to decide on this application. Application ZMA 21-03 is being filed simultaneously with application SD 2102. Application SD 2102 is pending the approval of application ZMA 21-03. So, at the com-- oh, here we go. "The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by the statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties, an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue." So that being read in, does-- do any of the Commissioners have any personal bias in regards to this application?
No.
No.
Any conflicts of interest?
No.
None.
No.
Any ex parte information?
No.
No.
What's that? And I'm a no. Thank you, on both counts, all three counts. At this point--
Barely hear Henry.
Barely hear Henry?
Look at this thing.
There we go.
It's not any better.
It's very low.
Did you make sure--
Try that.
Can you hear me now?
It's a little bit, not much.
Wow.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better.
Getting feedback.
Okay.
How's that?
Read my lips.
Too far away.
All right, that one's way better, I can hardly hear it. Try that one, Henry.
Okay. Can you hear me?
That's better.
All right, so at this point, we'll go to Angela for the staff report.
Subject tract contains 62,291 square feet, actually 1.43 acres. The property is currently zoned residential low-density R1 zone, and the comprehensive plan designation is medium-density residential zone. The applicant is requesting to change the zoning to medium-density residential, bringing it into conformity with the property's existing comprehensive plan map designation. Based on the review of the FEMA firm maps, panel 41043C0918G dated September 29th, 2010, the subject property is located outside the 100-year floodplain. The subject property does not show wetlands, waterways on the property that are depicted on the Sweet Home Local Wetlands Inventory and National Wetlands Inventory map. The subject property has frontage along Live Oak Street, and the subject property has access to city water and sewer services. Based on the Lynn County 2021 aerial photograph, the area is surrounded by residential low-density, residential medium-density, and residential high-density lots. Subdivision application SD 21-02 is pending the approval of application ZMA 21-03. Based on the findings, the proposed zoning plan designation would be consistent with the Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan. Staff finds that proposed zoning map amendment would be orderly and timely, be consistent with the pattern of development in the area, and based on the 2021 Lynn County aerial photograph, staff finds that the subject property is surrounded by low-density residential, medium-density residential, and high-density residential, and complies with this-- with the criteria. Water and sanitary sewer services are available in Live Oak Street. The subject property has frontage along Live Oak Street. The applicant has proposed a subdivision along with the zone map amendment application. And the subject property has existing frontage along Live Oak. The applicant has proposed-- whoops, sorry, read that. "The proposed use would be consistent with the comprehensive plan map designation. Based on these findings, staff concludes that the proposed zone change would not significantly affect the existing transportation infrastructure in the neighborhood and is consistent with the Sweet Home Transportation System Plan." Based on the findings listed in Section 3 of the report, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council approve this application. Since the request is for a zone change, staff is not recommending any conditions of approval. In acting on a zone change application, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at which it may either recommend that the City Council approve or deny the application. The recommendation should be based on applicable review and design criteria. The City Council will hold a public hearing and decide on this application. Motion: After opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, the Planning Commission's options include the following. One, move to recommend that the City Council approve applications ZMA 21-03, which includes the findings back listed in the staff report. Two, move to recommend that the City Council deny applications ZMA 21-03. You must specify reasons. Three, move to continue the public hearing to date and certain time. You must specify or four other.
Okay. So... I'm gonna go ahead and ask our applicant to come forward. Once you've had a seat, if you could state your name and address for the record, that would be great.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Hayden Luke with Recent Associates. Our address, 321 First Avenue East, Suite 3A, Albany, Oregon, 97321.
All right.
First off, I'd like to thank Angela for the staff report. It was pretty much exactly what I was gonna end up saying about the project. We comply with all the criteria, will be bringing a zone into conformance with the comprehensive plan. So I'm really just here to answer any questions.
All right. Do any of the Commissioners at this time have any questions they'd like to address to our applicant?
Much, much, to be on the next one.
On the subdivision itself. Commissioner Stevens, do you have anything you'd like to ask?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. I got a head shake from Commissioner Journey. So, thank you very much. I'll let you have a seat for just a sec.
Looks like Greg's back on.
Yeah.
Yep, there he is.
I didn't come in and go on.
All right.
I'm having a lot of trouble with my internet connection, but I'm back.
I don't know if it's me or Henry doing the feedback. At this time, we'll have anybody that's a proponent testimony, so those wishing to speak in favor of the application to come forward at this time if they wish. As there are none, we will look for opponent testimony, those wishing to speak in opposition of the application. Okay, any neutral testimony, not for or against, just want to make their opinion known for the record. As there are none, we will close the public hearing at 6:43 for discussion amongst the Commissioners. Do you guys have anything you'd like to mention about it, or leave it the way it is?
Sounds like it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it sounds like it's one of our missing pieces to bring in.
Yes, to bring it into conformity with the comp plan.
Commissioner Journey, I had to mute you, we had some background noise, so when you talk, unmute yourself.
All right, so if there's no further questions, we will look for a motion.
I would make a motion that we recommend that the City Council approve applications ZMA 21-03, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report.
I second that.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. We'll go to Angela for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Corn?
Yes.
Commissioner Journey?
Yes.
Commissioner Walthius?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Five days to absence, so motion passes.
Okay. So moving on to our next order of business. Application SD 21-02 will open the public hearing at 6:45, 6:46. Application SD 2102, the applicant is requesting to subdivide an approximately 1.42-acre property into eight lots, ranging in size from approximately 5,277 square feet to approximately 7,928 square feet. The proposed subdivision's average lot size is approximately 6,270 square feet. With the pending approval of zoning map amendment application ZMA 21-03, the proposed subdivision would be in the medium-density residential zone. Application SD 21-02 is pending the approval of application ZMA 21-03. Application ZMA 21-03 is being filed simultaneously with application SD 2102. "The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by the statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the properties, an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue." So, question for our Commissioners, do you have any personal bias in regard to this application?
No.
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 No, I have none. Any conflicts of interest?
No.
None.
No.
And I have none. Any ex parte information?
No.
None.
I drove by, but no other are ex parte.
Okay, and I have none. So with that being said, we will go ahead and turn it over to Angela for our staff report.
Live Oak subdivision will create eight lots for single-family dwellings on a 1.43 acre-- on 1.43 acres located on Lynn County Assessor's Map number 13S01E33A, tax lot 600. Lots created by the proposed subdivision will provide a variety of sizes. The smallest proposed lot is 5,277 square feet, while the largest lot is 7,928 square feet. The proposed subdivision's average lot size is 6,270 square feet. The proposed subdivision conforms to all applicable sections of Sweet Home Municipal Code and, when necessary, City of Sweet Home's Comprehensive Plan. This application narrative provides findings of fact that demonstrate conformance with all applicable sections of Sweet Home Municipal Code. The subject property is accessed via Live Oak Street. Live Oak Street is paved road, has one lane in each direction, and is constructed to urban local road standards. City of Sweet Home is the road authority for the roads. Adjoining zones and land uses: North, single-family dwellings zoned residential high-density by the City of Sweet Home. South, single-family dwellings zoned residential low-density by the City of Sweet Home. East, single-family dwellings zoned residential medium-density by the City of Sweet Home. West, single-family dwellings zoned residential low-density by the City of Sweet Home. Based on the review of the FEMA firm maps, panel 41043C0918G dated September 29th, 2010, the subject property is located outside the 100-year floodplain and in an area of minimal flood hazard. The subject property does not contain wetlands that are inventoried on the Sweet Home Local Wetlands Inventory and National Wetlands Inventory map. The subject property has access from Live Oak Street, and the city water and sewer services are available in Live Oak Street. With the pending approval of Zone Map Amendment application ZMA 21-03, the proposed subdivision would be in the medium-density residential zone. Application SD 21-02 is pending the approval of application ZMA 21-03. Application ZMA 21-03 is being filed simultaneously with application SD 21-02, which we just heard. "Based on the review of the applicant's site plans and the applicant's residential subdivision application, lot depth would not exceed two and a half-- two and one-half times the average width. There is a portion of each lot where the front building line would be at least 60 feet in width for an interior lot, and there are no corner lots. No lot would be dimensioned to contain part of any existing or proposed street. With the above-- or based on the findings above, the application complies with the criteria." "Based on a review of the applicant's site plans, the proposed lots would have at least 25 feet of frontage along Live Oak Street. The applicant has not proposed an access easement or a joint-use driveway. The applicant has not proposed any through-lots. As depicted on the attachment B, the proposed parcels would have sidelines that are very close to right angles to Live Oak Street. The applicant is not proposing any flag lots. The applicant has not proposed any special setbacks. Staff finds that the configuration of the proposed subdivision lot meets the criteria. The applicant is proposing to create eight residential lots and extension of Live Oak Street and associated utilities. As reviewed in the staff report, the lots would meet the minimum lot size of the zone and would be configured so that they could accommodate a residential dwelling. Staff finds that the applicant does not own any or other-- any other property adjacent to the site. Staff has not identified any features of the proposed subdivision that would inhibit development on the adjoining property. Per the staff engineer's comments, in Section 2, the applicant will be developing a connection link between two segments of Live Oak Street, one east of 44th Avenue, the other west of 467. The City of Sweet Home Transportation System Plan advocates road linkages where appropriate. The two existing roadways have different right-of-way and curb-to-curb widths, with those two transitions being made at the east end of the development. It is not an exact alignment match, so the transitions are needed on both sides of the street. There are two property actions that need to be accommodated in this process. At the eastern portion of Live Oak Street, there is a one-foot-wide reserved strip property owned by the city, which will need to be vacated upon completion and approval of the subdivision. At the western portion of Live Oak Street, between Lot 1 and 5, and the existing Lot 9 and Lot 10, respectively, there is a five-foot-wide portion of right-of-way running between the lots. This was originally intended to accommodate other area-street alignments. There was also a small turnaround extension on the south side of Live Oak Street off 44th Avenue. This is not needed when the roadway is connected through to 46th Avenue. The City of Sweet Home has jurisdiction on the turnaround and the five-foot-wide strips, which are all in the public right-of-way of Live Oak Street. CAD ES, which is Engineering Services, would recommend that the city vacate both unnecessary strip areas back to the adjoining landowners per the State of Oregon rules. Coordinate with the developer to remove the turnaround area and provide a straight curb and sidewalk to connect with the new project. Without this work, there will be inaccessible barrier to the sidewalk path on the south side of the street. Per the public works comments, in Section 2, the city would vacate the existing right-of-way slivers on the west leg of Live Oak Street to provide a uniform right-of-way width. So both engineering and public works are suggesting the same. Per the staff engineer's comments, in Section 2, utility services are fully available with the water system being connected and the sewer system extended from both directions. The other utilities of power, gas, and communications are available too. Staff has not identified any special features on the site. The applicant is not proposing to develop the property in phases. The city has not been informed by the Sweet Home School District that their adopted school facility plan has identified a lack of school capacity. Staff does not recommend that the application be denied based on a lack of school capacity. "To ensure compliance, staff recommends a condition of approval that upon development of the proposed parcels, the property owner shall construct all applicable street, sidewalk, and storm drain improvements that are required by and according to the provisions of the Sweet Home Municipal Code at the time of development. All public improvements must comply with the standards listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code at the time of development. Staff has recommended conditions of approval listed in Section 4 below, the act to ensure the final subdivision plat comply with the applicable-- the application that has been proposed. Additional conditions of approval may be required if any of the subject parcels are further divided under a future application or if they are physically developed with a residence. The approval shall be valid for 12 months. The applicant has not proposed a phased development. Extension shall be permitted as allowed under Sweet Home Municipal Code 1616080. Within one year from the date of the approval of the tentative plan, the applicant shall prepare a final plat in conformance with the approved tentative plan, the provisions of this title and the provisions of ORS Chapter 92. The applicant shall submit a final subdivision plat for the approval by city according to the procedures and requirements of Sweet Home Municipal Code 16.20. The applicant shall provide all information required by Sweet Home Municipal Code 16.20." Okay, I think I can continue. Conclusions: Based on the findings assessed in Section 3 above, staff recommends that the application be approved with conditions. The application shall be subject to compliance with the conditions listed below as required by the findings of fact presented in the review criteria in Section 3 above. Any modifications to the conditions listed below would require an approval in accordance with provisions of law, example variance, subsequent land use application, etc. The Planning Commission approves this application. Staff recommends that the conditions of approval listed below be required in order to ensure that the applicant-- that the application is consistent with the findings and the review and design criteria in Section 3 and is required by the Sweet Home Municipal Code and other provisions of laws. Appeals to the Land Board Use-- Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA, may only be based on review and design criteria listed above. Recommended conditions of the application is approved. Number one, the final configuration, the proposed lot shall be-- shall substantially conform to the plot plan reviewed in this application. See Attachment B. The final configuration is to subdivide an approximately 1.42-acre property into eight lots ranging from approximately 5,277 square feet to approximately 7,928 square feet. The proposed subdivision's average lot size is approximately 6,270 square feet. Approximately 7,350 square feet shall be dedicated as a public right-of-way for an extension of Live Oak Street to serve the proposed subdivision. Once the final plat is recorded, the applicant shall coordinate with the City of Sweet Home the vacation of the one-foot-wide reserve strip, the five-foot-wide right-of-way, and the small turnaround owned by the city. Once vacated, the applicant shall provide a straight curb and sidewalks to connect with Live Oak subdivision. Number three, the applicant should provide each lot with its own sewer lateral line. Number four, within one year from date of the approval of the tentative plan, the applicant shall prepare a final plat in conformance with the approved tentative plan, the provisions of this title and the provisions of ORS Chapter 92. The applicant shall submit a final subdivision plat for approval by the city according to the procedures and requirements of Sweet Home Municipal Code 16.20. The applicant shall provide all information required by Sweet Home Municipal Code 16.20. Number five, if improvement-- improvements within the subdivision shall be installed at the expense of the subdivider as required by Sweet Home Municipal Code 16.24.050. Improvements shall be made under the procedures and specifications listed in Chapter-- in Sweet Home Municipal Code Chapter 16.24. Number six, the applicant shall obtain all applicable development permits, which include but are not limited to public works permits, development permits, including building permits, and erosion control permits. The applicant shall obtain a 1,200-sea stormwater permit from the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality and any Department of State lands permits as applicable. "In taking action on a subdivision, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at which it may either approve or deny the application. The decision on the application must be based on the applicable review and design criteria. If approved, the Planning Commission may impose conditions of approval. Staff recommended-- recommended conditions are included in Section 4. Appeal period, staff recommends that the Planning Commission's decision on this matter be subject to a 12-day appeal period from the date that the notice of decision is mailed. Order after the Planning Commission makes a decision, staff recommends that the Planning Commission direct staff to prepare an order that is signed by the chairperson of the Planning Commission. The order would memorialize the decision and provide the official list of conditions, if any, that apply to the approval, if the application is approved." Motion: After opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, the Planning Commission's options include the following. One, move to approve application SD 21-02 and recommend the vacation of the one-foot-wide reserve strip, the five-foot-wide right-of-way, and the small turnaround owned by the city, including the conditions of approval listed in Section 4 of the staff report, adopting the findings of fact listed in Section 3 of the staff report, the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Two, move to deny application SD 21-02, including the adopting the findings, and you must specify the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Three, move to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain, and you must specify or four other.
Ooh, that was a marathon. Nice work, Angela. So at this time, we'll invite our applicant forward. Again, once you've had a seat, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Hayden Luke with Recent Associates. Our address is 321 First Avenue East, Suite 3A, Albany, Oregon, 97321. Angela covered just about everything. I don't have much more to add, but I think the important points are: Are lots conforming to the applicable municipal code standard? We're providing adequate sewer, water, transportation improvements, and we've read, reviewed, and agree with all the conditions and approvals set forth in the staff report. As of last time, we got a few questions on the subdivision, so I'm happy to answer them.
All right, do any of our Commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Well, I do, and I-- I know that we should be able to just look at a map and see what one acre looks like. But as I look at these, I'm not perfectly clear. Particularly about the property north of Live Oak. Now, Live Oak is gonna go all the way through, right?
Live Oak would connect, yes.
And we'll get rid of these little bumper strips at both ends. We're gonna take down the old metal building. Okay, and what about all of this property to the north?
I can address that.
Yeah.
Once again, and some of the surrounding property over there, I'm gonna have to file a property line adjustment. And so, property over there, the north half of this, is a little over an acre. Our applicant took theirs, and so we end up with the current property lines that we see in the subdivision. So the aerial map, the shaded area that's included on that, is a little bit larger than the actual subdivision.
So Henry, when that was done, it hasn't been, it hadn't been recorded when I did the aerial map, so it's showing the whole thing. It's not showing how it got divided. So, but because mine pulls, my layers pull from Lynn County, and it hadn't been updated yet, so I don't have any correct ones.
We'll deal with this property to the north later.
There is a single owner that owns that, and right now, there's just a single house being put up there, so that's all that's been posed there for the time being.
Okay. That's where many more questions are. Did you get my pencil?
I did, I still want. There we go. Do any of our, uh, other commissioners joining us online have any questions for our applicant?
So could I just clarify what you all talked about, that the northernmost property line of the parcels to the north of Live Oak? The property north of that is not included in our decisions tonight.
Correct. Any other questions for our applicant?
That makes things a lot cleaner.
Yes. All right, well, thank you so much. We may have you come back up. So at this time, we would invite anybody with proponent testimony, those wishing to speak in favor of the application to come forward. Any, any opponent testimony, those wishing to speak against the application. Any neutral testimony, those not wishing to speak in favor or against, just want to make their opinion known. As there is no testimony, we will close the public hearing at seven oh four for discussion amongst the commission. Does anybody have any questions in regards to what we've heard and seen?
I guess I have just one question for Angela. And that is, is there anything from your perspective that we're missing or that needs to be emphasized?
No, this one, um, is pretty, um, cut and dry, um, the way that they've divided the lots and, um, staff engineer, uh, Joe Graybill, he's here and he's reviewed their, their road plan, and, um, we've discussed the little one-foot strips, the one and five-foot strips, and, um, we have a plan to take care of those once this has been approved and moved forward, so, um, this one seems pretty cut and dry, uh, from our, from our point of view.
A nice thing too, it seems that this is connecting some things that, that have needed to be connected for a while, and the unity between the lots on either side of the property will bring some nice continuity to the area.
Right, thank you.
Is Forty-Fifth ever going to come through?
No.
Sorry. It's, uh, difficult to know that ahead of time. It's privately owned land. It would be up to that private owner.
It's a very narrow street, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, at least not part of this one.
I don't see that it would ever come through all the way.
So I guess at this time, if nobody else has any other questions for either staff or the applicant, that, uh, basically we'll just look for a motion.
I would move to approve application SD twenty-one dash oh two and recommend the vacation of the one-foot-wide reserve strip, the five-foot-wide right-of-way, and the small turnaround owned by the city, including the conditions of approval listed in section four of the staff report, adopting the findings in the fact listed in section three of the staff report, the setting of a twelve-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to report an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision.
Okay, we have a motion.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll go ahead and turn it over to Angela for the roll call vote.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Walthius?
Yes.
Commissioner Journey?
Yes.
Commissioner Corn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Five, yes, um, two absent, so a motion passes.
All right. Thank you guys so much for coming out, and, uh, I think that concludes the bulk of our, our applications, public hearing. So, uh, anything staff wants to bring in before us?
So just, um, our October meeting will have a conditional use and another subdivision, um, so, so there's a lot of subdivisions. Right now, I have four property line adjustments in the queue, um, two partitions. So I'm still moving on a lot of, we have quite a few partitions of property line adjustments every month. Oh, and application ZMA twenty-one dash zero two, which was the, um, which it was approved by city council, so you guys did that one, um, a couple of months ago. It'll take like a couple of months to do, so that one was actually approved by city council. Um, and then just a reminder that Harvest Festival is October second, and so we hope to see all of you there, and if you can volunteer, volunteer. If not, come join us. So I have eighty-seven vendors, but that includes food and, um, people on the bridge. So I tried to panic for a few seconds, but then realized I could fit them all in the park. So it's, it's
Good.
Going to be a good festival, so, but that's all I have.
Fantastic.
This is not part of this hearing, but.
October second.
Yep. Thank you. You too.
And we look at, I, I'm sorry, this is not burnout tonight, but when you look at this northern portion of the property, Manzanita has a cul-de-sac with houses at the end. They can't come through with that. Forty-Fifth Avenue is a little tiny street that probably is the only way to get into it.
Well, so Manzanita, the people that are building on that upper lot, they are building their house so that if Manzanita ever had to cut through, that it would be able to. So they are positioning their house so that if Manzanita ever has to go farther, that it would be able to, so the way that they're positioning it.
I maybe have that wrong. I apologize. Maybe it's airport that has the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, Manzanita.
Yeah, Manzanita pretty much has to come through.
Yeah. That in more than just one house, they, they have positioned it, you know, with, working with Joe. They positioned it to where their house will sit down below it, and so Manzanita will be able to come straight through.
So in our best hopes and efforts at some. So in our best hope, at some point, Manzanita may connect with, uh, Forty-Fifth and form an L shape if.
Possibly either that or it'll go just straight across and stop.
And just dead end right there.
On if, if and when there's ever development there.
All right.
I get off the cuff, but I think I've been around long enough that I tend to remember doing the airport cul-de-sac. That doesn't look like was a very wise decision. I think I remember opposing that. Could be wrong, but anyway, either here or there.
All right, and so that's, uh, pretty much it for tonight. I don't know if it would be wise to go over too much code review with so many people being gone. So, we can. Angela's calling it. All right, so we'll, uh, wrap up the planning commission meeting for, uh, September second at, what is it, seven fourteen? Thank you all for coming. Appreciate your time.